So we'll start. Got two decisions. First one being number 2818, 715 Meadow Lane.
I move we accept this decision as proposed.
No, second?
More in favor?
Aye.
Case number 2825, Ponzano and Har, 177 Wickapod Road.
I move we accept this decision as proposed.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a request for an adjournment for Home Nature Inc., 19 Pond Lane. We need a motion on that.
I move we adjourn to 2824.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just for the record on Home Nature, let's just note that I submitted a memo to the zoning board earlier this month, and I sent a copy to the applicant's attorney. I assume you got it, John?
If I didn't, that's just because I wasn't diligent enough in checking my email. I'm sure you got it. If I don't have it, I'll get a copy of it. Thank you.
It takes us down to the pending cases. The first one being 2817, 500 Old Town LLC, 500 Old Town Road.
I can word the motion for you. We grant a wetland special permit for the landscaping work in accordance with the wetland special permit prepared by our environmental consultant. Period. We find that this project constitutes a type-two action under C. You can just so move.
That's it?
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor? Case number 2823, Andrew Starr, 14 Leighton Avenue.
I trust you all have a set of plans this time. Because that was an issue the last time. My name is Mary Riley from Miami Renaissance Associates, 732 Smithtown Bypass, Smithtown, New York. I'm the applicant for Andrew Starr, owner of 14 Leighton Avenue. Last week, we, last month, we had some issues with, some dimensions were not on the plot plan. I believe that has been corrected. There was an issue with the dimensions to the deck. Those have been shown and indicated on the plot plan. And we had talked about where we were going to locate the equipment for the pool. Last week, last month, it was brought up that perhaps we could locate it in the cabana. The homeowner is not too keen on losing some of that space in that room. He would like to locate it along the back wall of the house next to the outdoor shower where we're proposing to put that.
Will it be conforming?
I believe it will be conforming. Still in the backyard, it meets the setbacks. I believe those were the issues last month that had come up.
That's my new cases.
Oh, is it? Should it was mixed?
But I might already transfer it out.
There is.
There's a site plan revision that was, it's last dated 7/11/14, that we received in our work session packet. And that shows the various items that are involved in the variance request, as you recall and as she indicated at the last hearing, we didn't have plans showing all of that. I don't know if you want her to walk you through the things that are on here that need a variance, or...
Yes. Just show you those if you can, I...
Absolutely. We're requesting variances for the following. A 50-square-foot north-facing front-covered porch with a proposed setback of 24 feet 11. 40-foot front yard is required. We're requesting a dormer addition to the existing home with a front yard required. Setback is 40 feet. The setback to that dormer is 32 foot 9 inches, because it is setback from the existing first-floor walls. A 575-square-foot rear deck. The required setback is 25. We are requesting 14 foot 7 and 1/2 inches. And we would also like to reconstruct and reduce an existing non-conforming garage to a 187-square-foot poolhouse with a side yard setback of 8.9 feet and a rear yard setback of 7.2 feet, where those required setbacks are 10 feet each.
That's all on here? Do you have any?
Bedrooms and parking. Bedrooms and parking, I guess.
It's three bedrooms, right?
Obviously. I don't want to pull off hand. Give me a second. One.
Yeah, we got it, right?
Yeah, could be enough anywhere.
Two, three bedrooms.
Yeah. Two spaces, actually. You have room for more if you only have four bedrooms.
There's, I'm sorry, there's four bedrooms.
Yeah.
Four bedrooms. Two upstairs, two downstairs.
Just room for three cars. You ready, yes? Jerry?
Uh... Checking a couple of things quickly. No, I think they've now shown what they're asking for. So that covers the things that I brought up at the hearing.
Now, we did have some comments last month from some of the neighbors who were concerned about parking during the construction.
Yes.
That's going to have to be made clear to whoever's doing the work.
Absolutely. I don't know if he's chosen a contractor yet. I think he's narrowing it down at this point, but I will certainly make that clear to the homeowner and to the contractor that that is a concern among the neighbors.
Very good. Do we have anyone in the audience like to refer to this application?
I don't have a thought.
You have a thought?
A thought, rarely, but there it is. Is that swimming pool fenced? Not around itself, I guess.
Is it indicated on here? There's a fence across the front? Yes, it is. It is fenced in along the deck. You follow the deck up to the back of the property line, and then if you follow the back corner of the house, at the top of the driveway, and across. And that becomes the enclosure.
Can I read this?
Um... No, it isn't the, uh...
This right here, this? Okay, so it's going in the back?
I don't see it coming up the rear, the side yard, though. Which is no big deal, you just gotta...
I can indicate that, but I believe there's...
You're not gonna see it unless it's fenced.
I believe there's a fence there anyway. That's a condo next door. Whether or not that fence is actually on the homeowner's property, the survey didn't indicate it one way or the other.
You have a vote, Rick? On the whole of this decision?
Okay. So move.
You got a second?
Um, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
It takes us down to the new cases. The first one being 2826, 1050 Meadow Lane.
Okay, for the applicant Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton. As you can see from the application, this is a request for a wetland special permit to install a catwalk on the property at 1049 Meadow Lane, which is opposite the home residence at 1050 Meadow Lane, both of which parcels are owned by the same owner. So to demonstrate that, I have a copy of a deed. Actually, as luck would have it, it's in all-in-one deed, both parcels being conveyed to 1050 Meadow Lane LLC. So I'll submit copies of that for the record. When you look at that deed and you look at the surveys, the oceanfront parcel, which is not the subject of this application, is tax lot four, but the property that is the subject of the application is tax lot five. I will mention to you, as you probably know, that the design of the, this catwalk was modified slightly as a result of a recommendation made by the town trustees. The initial drawing, as you know, had it jogging slightly to the north and the east, and the town trustees preferred it to be more of a straight approach, and so the application was amended. And we've submitted those revised drawings on the 15th of July. I would submit it's basically a straightforward application. It's a design to have a, an elevated catwalk which would actually protect the wetlands. It would have flow-through decking and some steps that would allow you to get to the water. I have Melissa Dedovic here. She's the environmental consultant who was involved with the project, and she can answer any technical questions you might have about it.
Chick, do you have any other thing?
Uh, just very minor. I did note that the design is proper. As Gil said, it's elevated above the wetlands. It has flow-through decking, which allows precipitation through. It also allows light through, so vegetation can grow underneath. It's no more than four feet wide, and this would be considered a, an appropriate pier design to protect the wetlands. I did have a question just about how it would be constructed to ensure that the wetlands are protected and that there is an activity on Meadow Lane. Since it's on a lot, it's 100% wetlands, and I understand that the individual constructing it owns the property across the street. So we just want to see how materials would be staged, how the wetlands would be protected, and how it'd be constructed, so as not to spill out onto Meadow Lane or impact the wetlands. So those are my only comments. The design is fine, in my opinion.
Do the wetlands run right up to the road, or is it, it looks like they're in from the road?
Pretty much. There's kind of a little bit of a dune environment. You know, from the bay, south, there's obviously the bay. That's what they want to get access to. They have steps down so that they can, you know, launch kayaks or whatever. And then there's a vegetated marsh, and then there's kind of some dune areas, and then there's another lower elevation area that has wetland vegetation. We were asked to flag this a number of weeks ago, a couple of months ago, and I did delineate it, and that wetland delineation on the plan is, is fine. It's what we flagged. It's kind of a mixed environment, and the catwalk just goes over everything.
Just a notice, as Chick did indicate, that my client also owns the property, the improved property across the street, and that would be a suitable place to store construction materials and have construction vehicles parked, so there wouldn't be any influence on Meadow Lane, which we sometimes run into as a problem. So that's, that's clearly not an issue.
And also for the record, the catwalk would be built from the road outward, so there really would be no storage on-site at all, particularly since we have the property across the street, so no machinery or anything should be, you know, stored for any amount of time. I would expect that the, most of the dockers that we deal with would have this done in one day. They like to get in and get out.
Propose to suck into the ground 10 feet into the marsh?
Mm-hmm.
How do they do that?
They jet them in. That's what I'm saying. They can get, they'll have that done in the morning, and then they'll do the planking in the afternoon, and it'll be done in one day.
What does jet them in mean, please? More.
Water jet them in, yeah. One, two, three, set them in, set them in, set them in. They measure them out.
How long is this gonna last if they're not treated?
It lasts about 20 years, 15, yeah.
Depends on the materials.
Depends on the materials.
It's usually the lifespan. Sometimes they do get damaged from ice or other environmental conditions, and they have to be replaced.
But this is really, if you look at it, it's really, it's not a dock, really. It's just a catwalk to get over to water access, so I don't foresee any ice heaves or anything like that really damaging that portion of, at that portion of Dune Road, Meadow Lane down there. I just want to let you also know that the trustees are about to approve this. They, again, asked us just to straighten this out. The reason we put it where, where it is is at least to get access to about .3 feet of water, so you could put a kayak in. Any shallower, you're gonna be sitting there trying to push yourself out.
All right, it's rough. Have to go at high tide. Rick, do you have any on this one? Anybody on the board?
No.
Nope. Anybody out in the audience have anything on this application? Do you have any written on this one?
Uh, there is a memo to the effect of what I just indicated to you, requesting some information about staging and materials.
To the board next month?
Uh, I don't have a, I don't have conditions drafted for this evening. It's the first time we've heard it. If the board is comfortable with the explanation that we heard tonight, you know, we can somehow incorporate that into the permit. I think my preference would be to have some type of a bullet list or narrative of exactly, you know, storage, again, crossing of Meadow Lane, if everything's stored on the south side, just to make sure that it's safe and done properly. If it's done in one day, that's great. I, I don't know for certain that that can happen, but it's been represented to you.
One or two days. I mean, it's a very quick procedure.
You know, not prepared to make the decision tonight, but perhaps if the applicant could provide that narrative, it would be so possible.
We could hold it open then, pending an area, right?
Yeah, as I said, the design is fine. There are no other questions. I don't see any issues, and we've had some explanation on the construction. If everything's in before work session and the board wants to go with it next month, we could certainly do that.
Okay. Okay?
Okay, great. Thank you.
We'll hold it open pending that.
So what is it you want to do? Close for all purposes?
No.
I mean, adjourn for all purposes?
No. It's adjourned for all purposes. She's gonna have to do some...
It's adjourned for all purposes.
Second, Pat?
All in favor? For the application of 2827, Peter Schoenfield, 1550 Meadow Lane.
Again, for the applicant Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton. I have an affidavit of posting and mailing. This should be a relatively straightforward application. Again, it's an application for wetland special permit to construct a small addition at the northwest corner of the existing house. Now, it's one thing I'll mention that since the application was filed, it was modified slightly. The owner not, I don't think there's any significance with respect to the wetlands application. You may remember that when we filed the original plans, it was a request to have some additional second-floor space with a deck below it. And what the client decided to do while he was, if he can, while he's at it, on the first level, instead of having a deck, he'd like to have some enclosed space which would square off his kitchen and his study. So there's no, would be no increase in coverage or the perimeter of the building over and above what we applied for. Each addition would add 115 square feet, so it'll be 115 square feet on the second floor and 115 square feet on the first floor. And as I indicated in the application and what I just said, the only purpose of the two additions is to, number one, to square off the northwest corner of the building and to enlarge the existing spaces, so we're not adding any additional amenities or facilities. We would submit this as a minor, a really minor application. It's a protrusion of a roof.
Does that correspond to what we received here today?
Yes, yes. As I say, the footprint, the footprint outlined of the building doesn't change. It's just instead of having a second-floor enclosed space and then an open deck under it, that open deck would be enclosed. It's the same footprint, but no increase in the facilities. As you can see on the, on the site plan submitted, number one, this is a minor project. Number two, there's quite a large parking area located to the, to the east of the existing house where construction materials and vehicles and so forth could be stored, so there wouldn't be any problem with that kind of activity, especially given the minor nature of it. And it's also important to note that where the wetlands are, there's an existing driveway. Actually, it's a right-of-way that services several parcels, two other parcels that's between this and, and the, the wetlands themselves. That's, so actually, we're not increasing any impervious surfaces, and I submit that any, any runoff that would come from this additional 115 square feet of roof would be able to be handled by the drainage that's already there. I think there's drainage already existing. As you can see, there's a substantial driveway and parking area. That would be more than adequate to handle construction materials and... That's about all I have to say. If you have any questions, I'd like to try and answer them.
This is the one with the wooden bridge, right?
That's the one with the bridge. And when you saw the poster, you probably noticed it was not directly in front of this house. That's because it shares an access with the other parcels.
That's true.
You can see, I'm just noting on the survey, there is a, there are a couple of substantial catch basins located on the east side of the existing parking area. And I would, I would suggest that this really would have no impact, no additional impact
You have any?
No. Nothing further to say?
No. Jerry? No. Nick?
I was out the hall for a second, but could you explain the plans that just came in tonight?
Yes, yeah, the only...
Differences?
Yeah, the only difference is, the survey now shows that the addition, the second floor is going to be additional living space, and right below it, where we propose to have an open deck, that's going to be enclosed just to expand the kitchen and the study. Right now, they have kind of a beveled-off corner, so they'd be rectangular. That's all. No, no change in the footprint from what we originally applied.
My only question did have to do with just making sure that any new impervious roof area did have drainage. So I, I assume that this will be, gutters will be installed?
Yes, I'm sure.
And will it be tied into the drainage system?
Yeah, I'm sure that's the case.
And it's such a small area, it shouldn't really...
It's 115 square feet of additional roof area.
Yeah. We could always do that with a condition, just to make sure that it's, you know, gutters and meters to the existing drainage system. So I have no further questions.
Anybody out in the audience like to refer to this application? Yes, sir.
Would you like to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Ethan Ravitch. I'm the stepson of Wendy Joseph, the owner and resident of 1580 Meadow Lane, which is the property immediately adjacent to the site of this proposed expansion, and I am here to voice our objections to this proposed construction. The proposed expansion to 1550 Meadow Lane will encroach on a shared driveway, potentially impacting passageway to our site, 1580 Meadow Lane. In winter months, ice that overhangs this shared driveway could prove to be dangerous consequence of this proposed addition. Furthermore, we are concerned that emergency vehicle access may be restricted by this overhang that encroaches over the shared driveway. The proposed expansion is an unnecessary disturbance of wetlands. These wetlands are already considered disturbed, but is further disturbance truly necessary? This is a fragile and beautiful ecosystem and not, must not be violated without demonstrating considerable justification beyond merely expanding the size of one's home. All of the homeowners who have property adjacent to these wetlands should safeguard rather than seek to minimize these proposed lands. Furthermore, the size and scope of impact on the wetlands has not yet been established as per the zoning ordinance, which requires that, quote, "A detailed report on the specific purposes, nature, and scope of the activity proposed included shall be a report on the, sorry, extent and type of wetlands involved in the completed long environmental assessment form, part one." Lastly, the proposed expansion to 1550 Meadow Lane, in addition to further creeping towards the wetlands boundary, will have the effect of casting shadows on these wetlands. 1550 Meadow Lane is south of these wetlands, and this proposed expansion with sizable roof expansion and deck so close to this fragile ecosystem will undoubtedly have undesired effects. That is all.
How do you see it encroaching on the driveway? I don't see it on this map. I don't know if you have the map.
I don't have my version in front of me, but the, it, the overhang kind of abuts and goes beyond the shared driveway.
Not from what we see.
Really?
Okay, you want to look?
Can I explain? In fact, that's the point of that access. A part of the existing overhang already does extend over the right-of-way. And I talked to the, actually, I had a visit with the fire marshal earlier in the week, and I asked him about the fire access issue, if there be, could possibly be any issue with emergency vehicles. If you look at the, the architect's drawings we submitted, the, the distance between the grade and the underside of the soffit of the roof overhang is 32 feet. And I asked the, I asked Dean McNamara specifically. He said that would not be a problem. In fact, you could stack two fire trucks on top of each other and it still passes under. So that there, I, I thought of that, and that is absolutely not an issue. And by the way, it all, it all, there already is some projection over that access.
You're not adding to the projection. The projection's there. You're building underneath the projection.
Well, we're squaring it off. Right now, the building is, right now, the building is not square in the front. We're squaring it off.
I'm sorry, isn't this proposed expansion, this deck expansion over here?
Not all of it. Just, just here. Just, just here. This is, this is, this overhang is already here. We're just going from here to here.
Yes, does this corner over here, does that not?
The corner over here does reach over, yes, it does. But, but a part of the overhang already does overhang the access. That's my whole point.
So because it already exists, it should be expanded?
Bear in mind, this is not a variance application. This is a wetland special permit application, so I think that the, the standard of review should be...
When I think, but then I think his argument, since the roof's already there, you're not adding any more shading because you're building underneath the roof.
But we're squaring it off, so in...
I understand you're squaring it off, but, but...
Yeah, we're really not adding any, any more shading.
So the part down there?
Yeah, if you had an elevation, um... That upper roof was already projected out over that angle. What I'm saying is that this point here already exists, correct?
No, this point here doesn't.
It does not.
It's, it's, if you look, the, the thing goes, then it cuts back. That's why we're squaring the whole thing off.
It's angled.
It's angled now.
Well, even that upper roof part is angled.
Even the upper roof part is angled, but over here it isn't. In other words, roughly from here to here, it's there. It's just this corner that's...
Okay. Yeah. And we're not gonna have any, it's gonna be properly drained, so there wouldn't be any runoff there.
Well, that's, yeah, that's Chick's point, that we have to direct any runoff into the existing drainage system, so that would, that would address that issue totally.
Is it your opinion, sir, that the drainage...
Well, that's, yeah, that's Chick's point, that we have to direct any runoff in for the existing drainage system. So that would, that would address that issue totally.
Is it your opinion, sir, that the drainage system is adequate at this point, or is there ice that acts up and does weird things?
No, in the winter, there is ice, as there are in lots of these properties because of the proximity to the ocean and the precipitation.
Where is the ice?
It's not falling off the building onto the road. Is that what you're saying?
Icicles form on overhanging structure, and this is an overhanging structure.
Okay.
If need be, can't you just put a, there are lines that you can run through the gutters, that you plug into the wall and keeps it hot?
Well, it's a flat roof.
Well, the roof drains, and it'll take all the water off. It doesn't...
I'm talking about the gutters or the downspouts.
That too.
Yeah.
Right, so we're going to direct it so that there isn't any more drainage. I think that was Chick's point, and we intend to address that.
Yeah, so the drainage is such a way that no icicles can form there.
Right. But is it effective now?
Any number of sources, it doesn't have to be from icicles.
Yeah, but I mean, if you're driving underneath there, you're driving under somebody's overhang, and you got ice, those form, falls down, that, that could be hazardous.
It's already, as I say, it's already partly, part of it already is existing. Part of it's already there. It's not as if we're creating a condition that didn't exist in part already.
But you're increasing it.
Yeah, we're going to fix it.
So that's why, if you were, if you're going to design it such a way that there would be no, no way for any icicles to form?
Right.
That it would drain back from that point rather than to that point?
Right. I'm sure the architect can design something along those lines.
Other than the points I enlisted, no.
Anybody else that would like to talk to this application? Do we need more information, Chick? What do we need?
I think the drainage issue should be addressed in some way. I do know on the plan that the triangle where the overhang is being expanded is shown on here. There's like a dashed line at that angle. So I think as long as we address that drainage issue, that's fine. I don't know if Gil wants to respond to any of the environmental issues, but I'm not that concerned about it because it's such a minor addition on an existing house that's across a driveway from the wetlands. I don't see any major issue there.
Is it holding open? We need some more information about the drainage?
So a move adjourned for all purposes?
Okay. Someone's there?
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
I think you rendered a decision on Tur Har. Could I get a copy of that decision?
Which one?
Tur Har.
With the S on O and R?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got extra copies hanging around in some of here.
You guys may have started a little early. Either that or I was late.
Hang on, I need a plan.
Sorry. I understand the Meadow Lane decision wasn't rendered because there wasn't a memo from Chick. I don't think you voted on that one?
Yes, we did.
You did?
We did, yeah.
Oh, you did? Okay, could I have a copy of that?
That one too?
Yeah, could I have a copy of that one too?
Is that one?
Was that the decision?
Yes.
It was done, Gil.
Okay, okay.
Sorry for the objection.
Okay.
Here's the other one.
I'll save Melissa from having a heart attack.
That's why, that's why I couldn't remember. It was done before last meeting.
No problem, no problem. Thank you very much.
Case number 2828, Douglas Barzalay, 48, Old Town Crossing.
Evening. Robert Cottling of Foul Fritz, 50, Station Road, Watermill, New York, for the applicant Douglas Barzalay. We're here tonight asking for relief from section 116-11.1 of the Village Code to allow for the construction of a swimming pool located within a front yard and 30 feet from the street where 50 feet is required. The property is burned by fronting on two streets, Old Town Crossing, which is in front of the house, and Toil Someplace, which is a dead-end street that abuts what is, in all intents and purposes, the rear yard of the house. The parcel is approximately 14,716 square feet in size and is subject to the restrictions of R-20 zoning. This property was previously improved with a swimming pool attached as Exhibit B to the packet I just handed out. Y'all find a certificate of occupancy, number 5257, dated July 3, 1991, which was issued for that swimming pool. That swimming pool was situated 26 feet from Toil Someplace, some four feet closer to where the proposed pool is proposed to be situated. In 2006, the then owners of the property obtained a building permit to remove the pool and construct an addition on the house. That addition houses an indoor swimming pool right now. The current property owner, who is the previous property owner's son, has no use for that indoor pool and is proposing to remove the majority of the addition along with the indoor swimming pool and replace it with the proposed 20-by-40-foot pool. The dimensions of the proposed pool are extremely similar to the pool which was there in 1991. The chief difference between the two pools is that the pool, which is the subject of this application, is four feet further from Toil Someplace. No other relief for the pool is required from this board.
Four feet near or four feet further?
Four feet further from, farther from Toil Someplace. So it's four feet closer to the house. No other relief for the pool is required as it's proposed to be 20 feet from each side yard lot line, and it conforms to zoning in all of the regards. As you can see from the aerial photograph, Exhibit D in the packet, swimming pools and other accessory structures are prevalent in the neighborhood. In fact, you can see that virtually all the properties along Old Town Crossing have some kind of accessory structure in the rear yard, whether it be a pool, shed, or a playing court. A grant of the relief requested would in no way alter the character of the neighborhood. In fact, a grant of the variance would be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Exhibits E and F show the property from Toil Someplace and Old Town Crossing. As you can see, the pool will be visible from either vantage point. Due to the non-conforming size of the lot and the fact that it is burdened by having two front yards, there's really no other place to locate the pool other than in the spot proposed. If the pool was shifted a few feet closer to the house, that would interfere with the use of the garage, and there really would not be adequate separation between the two, and the variance would still be necessary. The property is located in an area of the village where there are no unique or unusual landforms. It's not burdened by having wetlands on the property, and there are no threatened or endangered species in close proximity. A grant of the application will not create any adverse impacts on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And pursuant to Secra, the grant of an area variance presumptively has no negative impacts on the environment. The relief requested is not substantial, particularly when you consider it in the context of the surrounding circumstances. As I mentioned, the fact that it's undersized and burdened by fronting on two streets. Due to these factors, virtually any proposed project in the rear of this property would require relief from this board. The proposed pool will not impact the neighbors to the east or the west as no relief is being sought from the side yard lot lines. Finally, I would submit that the hardship is not self-created. As I mentioned numerous times already, the property is undersized and has two front yards. Anything's going to, any work in the yard is going to require a variance from this board. But as you, I'm sure I know, even if you rendered a decision that the relief is a self-created hardship, that would not preclude the board from granting the application.
Just if I can get this straightened. There was a pool there in 1991. There was an outdoor pool.
Correct.
And that pool from Toil Someplace was how many feet?
It was 26 feet.
26, sorry. So this one would be 30.
Correct.
So that pool was removed?
It was removed.
And then an indoor pool was built?
Right.
And that's going to be removed.
Exactly. The addition and the indoor pool will be removed.
On the survey, there's a dotted line going across, and it shows an existing pool under roof to be demolished.
Right.
Does that mean the roof is going to be demolished also?
Yes.
Back to that dotted line?
It's going to go back to that dotted line, yes.
All right, and then that area then is going to be reclaimed yard?
Correct.
Right, so that... So the overall lot coverage?
Should decrease.
Huh?
It should decrease.
Right, yeah, so I was wondering, okay. Going to be any patio around this pool?
I'm not entirely sure of that. I could, you know, find that out and...
It's just that on the Toil Someplace side of the pool, the side that is closest that actually doesn't conform, I don't think we'd want a patio there.
Okay.
It could also wheel this pool if it came down to it, I suppose. Rotate it.
Rotate it and put it up closer to the house?
One could, if there's any, you know, major objections to this.
You might still get the same 30 feet, though.
Yeah.
Of course, that would give the long side heading to a Toil Someplace.
Yeah, I don't know if this...
I'd rather have the entertainment. If they're going to have a patio, have it be on that side of the pool.
Between the house and the pool.
Yeah, yeah, true.
That would keep it away from Toil Someplace by more than 50 feet.
Right.
As far as the entertainment goes. I assume that the back of there is very heavily screened, right?
From Toil Someplace?
Yeah.
It's, there's a six-foot stockade fence there, and there is vegetation.
Is that this picture?
Yes.
This is looking toward Toil Someplace, I believe, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, retrieved.
Not too much to say.
Dan? Jerry? Rick?
Uh, no.
Anybody out in the audience that would prefer to this application?
Somebody complaining here on this property.
No. Not these. It's a pleasure.
A adjourned for decision.
Some move?
Second.
Someone's there?
All right.
Kevin?
Yeah?
I'm going to get a glass of water. I'll be right back.
Okay.
Thanks to the folks.
Is that the same guy who saw you just on the Holsey Street?
Uh-uh. No, no.
I remember how, that guy was very good.
Everybody?
Remember, we were hearing cautious about what we were doing. We wanted to make sure it was all...
Yeah.
It was different after that. The application, case number 2829, Scott Paul Lee, LLC, 130 Lee Avenue.
For the applicant John Bennett and Tony Hume, the project manager, is with me this evening. And we're here to request that the board grant a front yard setback on this property from the required 90 feet, 75.7 feet. From a percentage point of view, I would submit as a relatively minor variance. For a 273-square-foot pool house, the maximum possible accessory structure in this district is 800 square feet, so we're quite a bit under that. And I do, I even, it actually went so far as to put this in my application. I want to apologize for not making the pool house application part of the original application. The board...
I was just going to ask you that.
Yeah, I know. The board was...
It was double work, John.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I, I was not thrilled when this came in later because it really should have been part of the original application. So I apologize for what had been an unethical and effort at the time of the board. I think the overall plans for the properties was not developed. As we pointed out to you the last time, the property is going to be used, not in legal but in de facto, common use with the property to the northeast. And at the time of the original variance request, the overall plans for the properties hadn't been developed. So I apologize for that. I guess it's, it might be said that some, some folks aren't as aware as I certainly am of your request to put this stuff all in. So again, sorry for making you, making you double work here. But you were kind enough to grant a variance for an existing pool. I think there's a decision, which I made part of your packet, was back in April. And if you remember, as, enough of the existing pool, pool for the proposed pool, and you remember that when we asked for relief, we were removing both a tennis court, which is on the property, which when we remove that will make it incapable with the, the lot will be incapable of having, supporting a tennis court in the future because of lot coverage restrictions. But we were also removing a pool that had three nonconformities and placing a pool that albeit not totally conforming, much closer to conformity in the southerly portion of the premises. So, and again, those, our arguments would have been more convenient if I put the whole package in, but here we are, and I hope you don't hold it against me.
No.
Okay.
Not for long.
Not for long.
That pool's up there. That pool's not good there, right?
It's a 273-square-foot pool house. And again, that's substantially less than the 800 square feet allowed in our R-20 zone. And I want to suggest that what we could, would agree to as a condition is that we wouldn't come back and try to make this structure any larger than the 273 square feet. I think it's important because, just in terms of keeping the homeowner and any honest on some, any subsequent applications, don't come in and get a variance for 273 square feet and then come back in and try to enlarge it. So there was, there would be no enlargement to this structure. If the applicant decided in the future that they wanted a larger pool house, they'd have to move it to a conforming location, so...
No, we're not allowing property.
But again, this is, we have, although the pool pavilion would not meet the required front yard setback, it is, however, in the, well behind the front yard of the form by the existing property, which is 26.3 feet. And it is, again, part of an overall scheme for development of the property. The preference is, and Tony can explain greater if you need, but I don't, I don't think it's necessary. The whole idea is that to have this pool house be a center, a sort of a folly at the end of this, a lay of trees, and you can see that the, you can see that the plans for the pool house is just, so given the fact that this is well behind the existing de facto front yard and minimal, I believe a minimal from a percentage point of view request for relief and consistent with the prior relief that you were kind enough to grant and having little impact on the, on the neighborhood if any, it's still 75.7 feet from the, from the property line, we would, we would hope that you could, would let us sort of append this on to a prior request for relief and all the good things that that brought about, which is the removal of the tennis court and the removal of a pool in a significantly non-conforming location. Again, I wish we had made the application part of the original, but here we are.
I mean, I look at this huge piece of property. It seemed like if they swiveled the pool a little bit, you could move the, swiveled the whole pool a little bit, and the whole pool house would slide back 15 feet, and everything sort of would conform.
Well, we have a variance for the pool anyway, and...
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's a, so you've got a variance for a pool, now you need a variance for the pool house, and you've got this huge piece of property.
I guess what I point out is that there was some fairly substantial, from a point of view, of impact, givebacks, as it were, in the, in the last request for relief. of view, of impact, givebacks, as it were, in the, in the last request for relief. There's a, you know, it's a tennis court there that's going to be removed and significantly reduce lot coverage, but by, by reconfiguration, the redevelopment of the property is going to make it such that this, you won't be able to have a tennis court on the property. I know you guys are, I don't think you've ever granted a lot coverage variance for tennis courts, so that's going to make it impossible. Tony, maybe you could explain what the thought was in terms of the landscaping plan?
Again, apologies for this. I'm Tony Hume. I represent Skyfall Lee.
Can I hear him?
You'll.
Can you hear him all right, Tony?
Can you hear me?
I can hear him as long as he's standing up.
Okay. But once again, apologies for the second visit to you. The project evolved, and again, the design team, the, the idea of this allay that aligned with the way these buildings are organized in this small orchard that's been planned for this part of the property, created this, if you want, an access.
Visual access.
Visual access. Sightline. That was now very important to our, our client, which is one, one reason why we located the pool here. This came up as an afterthought, is now seen as an important feature in the, in the concept of this plant, of this development. It's an open structure. There's a, there's a, there are two sort of wings to it. One is a lavatory, and on the other side is a storeroom, a locker.
Open in the middle?
It's open in the middle with no doors.
Yeah, it's minimal impact.
We would also propose to put the pool equipment under there so that it would minimize the noise of the pool.
Under by under, you mean?
You can't have, and I don't believe you can have any sort of basement in an accessory structure.
But you could, I mean, if you wanted to sink it, I mean.
Oh, sure, okay, I just wanted, didn't want to run afoul of that.
Yeah, I don't want to run afoul either, but our proposal was to put a small crawl space to.
Oh.
House the pool equipment so that the pool equipment wouldn't be.
And that would need a variance, too.
Yeah, because you, it's underground. Oh, it would need a variance for the location of the pool equipment as well.
Yeah. Well, unless you're, unless you're on the east side of it.
Unless you're on the east side of it, yeah. I don't, would that run afoul of the prohibition? It says a basement, I don't think you can have a basement or a cellar in an accessory structure, but if it, if it was a pit, if it was a crawl space to house accessory, I'm sorry, to pool equipment, I don't believe that would be either a basement or.
You want the guy that's going to work on the pool equipment to be a hunchback?
No, it would be a vault into it.
There would be a, like a pico hat.
Hatch to it.
A youthful pool guy.
What?
Or a youthful.
A youthful pool guy.
If that's problematic, we can just put it somewhere else.
I think it'd be nice to put it in a conforming location till we get something on this property that conforms.
Okay.
And landscape it in rather than build a structure around a building.
I mean, why don't the pool house was put to the east of the pool? Would it need any?
That's a sightline.
Yeah.
That's, that removes the sight.
Well, the sightline is a matter of personal preference. It's not, it really doesn't apply to zoning.
No, it isn't, no. It should be correct, but it's a design aspect here.
It's a design aspect, and the, the way I read the law is if the benefit, the benefit that the applicant wants.
The question is, would they need a variance if the pool equipment was put on the east side?
No, they would not. No, they wouldn't. I sort of feel if I, I don't know, how do I say this without being too flip, flippant? I, I think if this application, if this pool house had come in as part of the additional application, it would be, would have been less problematic, you know, because, I mean, we've, you know, I've already sort of, let's be, sort of given up a lot of the givebacks in order to give, put the pool here than taking the tennis court away. I think if it had been part of the original application, I don't think it would have been as problematic, to be very honest with you.
The givebacks are long forgotten.
Yeah, I know. What if you done put me late? I'm sorry, excuse me.
This is a, this is a right of way, too. At this side of the property, is that a, is that a right of way there?
That's a driveway.
It's a driveway.
That's what I mean, it's a driveway, so it's not.
We conform as it relates to that, anyway.
The hedging and the, actually, the existing hedging.
Right, so it's pretty good screening there, and I, I don't know if you're going to see this, what's, this is what Lee Avenue out here, right?
Yes.
From any of the planting in here, is any of this going to be visible at all from Lee Avenue?
I don't believe it will be.
Well, we can assure you that it's not.
The, the grade that we are proposing, we're proposing to lower the grade around the pool by one foot from the surrounding grades.
How high is the pool house?
It's about fifteen, because the top of the finial is fifteen-two and a quarter, so the, the finial's a little spike, which is about.
Kind of like the open land.
Fourteen. The roof, the original roof is fourteen feet from grade.
I mean, I see some heavy trees in that upper corner, that's why I didn't know what that.
This is, this, the corner of our.
All this in here looks like it's heavily.
It's going to be heavily planted.
Yeah.
We are, our, our neighbor to the, I guess he's to the southwest, is, this is a private hedge that's about fourteen-plus feet or twelve-plus feet high. We're going to plant a second layer on our property along here. I'm pointing to this boundary on our property here will be planted. We're putting a new evergreen hedge in this along Lee Avenue.
I agree.
It will be about, well, we'd like to achieve about eight to ten feet-ish. We're above Lee Avenue, and the, the grade of our property is above it, so I would propose that the pool house won't be visible from Lee Avenue at any point as you drive past us.
And that is a driveway there, right?
It's a right of way, yeah.
It's a right of way, going back to the property.
Twenty feet perhaps.
So the house would be on the other side of it. So instead of being thirty feet, it's really going to be more than fifty feet.
Yep.
At least fifty.
Before you reach the other property line.
At least fifty before you reach the other property line.
Yeah, the, there's a house up here, there's.
And if you put the pool house wherever it is on the easterly side, now you are buttoned up against those people who have the right of way, a little bit.
Yep.
Do you have to get border health for a septic system for the pool house? You're going to have to.
Yes, we're going to have a.
Yep, we're going to have to, and I have to keep it twenty feet from the pool. But that obviously is not going to have any impact on the, the, the septic system will have to be twenty feet from the pool.
Correct.
But we can achieve that. So again, I, I don't know how to say it other than I think if we had presented this as part of the whole package, it wouldn't have been as problematic, so.
So you agree with that?
We are where we are, and I ask you not to.
Four, we gave them seventy-five, we would have given them that, probably, yeah.
We're having any other comments?
Just on the one hand, it backs up to a driveway, but if it, if there's an area where it confirms.
You know what, if, if, before they changed the village law, I would have agreed with you, but back about ten, the village, state village, and Nick will tell you if I'm full of baloney, but before they changed the New York State Village and Town Law, it's really, it's really, it's really not the kiss of death if you have a conforming location, it's whether or not the benefit that you're requesting.
High point, Chester.
Yes, whether or not the benefit you're requesting is going to have any truly negative impact. The best example was somebody wanted to have a, over in Shelter Island, wanted to have their porch on the waterside in Dering Harbor, and Dering Harbor kept on turning them down by saying, you can put your porch in a conforming location on the rear yard of the, of the property, and finally the appellate division said, well, that, yeah, that's, that's nice, yeah, you got a conforming location there, but the benefit is to be able to walk out and see, see the water. I'm not saying it's as extreme here, but.
I don't see any adverse impact to neighbors, so, you know, so that's true, I see more, you know, the owner being able to use the property like he wants to unit, use it without causing any adverse impact to any neighbors around him, that's why I was asking so much about the screening and.
I agree. Rick, you ready?
Of course.
Anybody out in the audience like to heard of this application?
You might be wrong.
My name is Francisco Pizcetan, I'm living south and east of Skyfall Lee. Now, do, I just have a quick question, where are they, they're going to put the pool house? Because from the plan that Mr. Bennett sent to us, there was no the.
A dimension?
The, no, no, the pool equipment, so sorry.
Oh, the pool equipment.
Yes.
Where would you like it?
The forest.
Seriously?
No, no.
No, I'm quite serious, yeah.
I was asking you, only that.
As far away from me as possible.
As far away.
As far away from, because my bedroom is just here.
No, 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 where, oh, oh.
Yeah, this way.
Sure. Oh, you're over here.
Yes, I'm here.
Your house is here.
Oh, that's less problematic, yeah, okay.
I saw you cutting the hedges the other day.
This is my driveway, yes, we cut the hedges, yes.
So.
To make them thicker.
Where's the, where's the most optimum place, but still you'd want it ninety feet, Kevin, from the, if there are any.
You don't want to get it too far from the pool, or you could.
No, no, I know, but I also want to accommodate the neighbor.
Wait, that's just somewhere for the pool.
Near here?
It's going to be in the way there.
There's a way where we can put it under that.
You've got to find someplace where you can screen it, because people don't like to look at pool equipment.
No, and I'm actually as concerned about, you're more concerned about noise.
You would be concerned about noise.
Yes.
That means like north or west?
And also, there's a visual issue. We, I think Mr. Bennett.
Now, plus, you know, the private hedge during the winter was old, because we have private hedge and we have a line of trees.
Well, we'll evergreen screen the.
You are going to put evergreen, no?
That's a fine condition.
On our, our side, we have a scheme, we're going to create a hedging on our side.
Yes.
But also there'll be a path for people to walk around.
Okay.
But let's.
But let's focus on pool equipment.
Distance, so I want to make sure the, the distance is satisfactory to the neighbor because that, that's.
Actually, by having the pool there, unless granting you the variance, rather than putting on the east side of the property, it gives you more.
No, no, for me, for me, it's much better. This way, I was just was asking you where, to where to put the pool, the pool equipment.
Why don't we say we'll put the pool equipment a minimum fifty feet from, from.
East property line?
From east property line.
Okay.
Okay. And, and screen it with evergreen screening. Is that's okay for?
We have eighty-one.
Fifty.
We cannot put in the back here.
Yeah.
It's closed, no?
Like fifty.
Why not eighty here?
Well, that'd be too close to the pool if it's eighty, you run up against the pool. I mean, most any place in here, right?
I just don't, I just don't want to say we'll just put it a minimum, the minimum setback, because I, I think we have, we're trying to maximize the.
Well, you don't want it between the pool house and the pool.
No.
So, looks like somewhere to the.
The pool.
Northeast of the pool.
The northeast of the pool. That's right here, but, but no closer than fifty feet.
In a corner of where the tennis court is.
The tennis court's blocked, right? No, but where it was, somewhere in that area.
The tennis court.
I mean, you can put underground.
You can put it in a pit.
In a pit.
Put it in a pit, yeah.
In the middle.
At least fifty feet from the easterly property line. Either in a pit or evergreen screened.
If you dropped it, even if you dropped it into the ground like two feet, whether, then the motor is below grade, that would block pretty much all the noise, you know.
And there's no, there's no way we can put it under a section of that.
Well, I think if you put it under a section, it creates access problems, and it may arguably be inviolative of the prohibition that's basements or indoor cellars underneath an accessory structure. So we're going to put it in, sink it a bit, keep it fifty feet away from the easterly property lines.
And straight.
Let's keep it out.
It'll be straight.
It's two-hundred-and-ninety-seven feet, make it three-hundred-and-ninety-seven feet.
Fifty would be here.
Yeah, just don't want, we just.
Burn a big line from Captain Zickland.
Can you, can you, can you house it here in the barn? That's a long run.
That's a long run over to the barn, yeah.
That's a, that's a really long run.
Which brings up the point that it's a long run to walk to the pool house.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully there's a bathroom.
That's fine, we're going to have to deal with that, okay?
Or any of the other houses.
It's going to be at least fifty feet from the east property line, that's what you're saying.
At least fifty feet from the east property line, ever, and, and evergreen screened indoor in a pit.
And ninety feet from the street.
And ninety, ninety feet from the street, yes, it'll conforming, yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Let's not try, let's not try these.
So, Rick, you want to hold it open?
Adjourned for decision. Adjourned for decision.
Some move.
Second.
Hold on, David.
All right. Aye, aye.
Thank you, John.
All right. All right, here he comes again. Oh, please. Please.
Hello again.
Good evening, Bruce Horwith, I'm the agent for the Wickapock Pond Project, owners in the village and the Old Town Southampton Association. And I'm here to try to get a permit, I guess it would be either amendment or modification, to allow the continuation of phragmatis cutting, but to move it in two locations to have it go further from the shoreline up into, into an area that's not exclusively phragmatis, but has some other invasive species, well, has a mixture of plants that are, at this point, blocking access to the phragmatis. So we want to be able to cut into that area as well, protecting the native vegetation where it exists, and then hopefully being able to establish native vegetation in areas that open up and we, we feel it'll be able to survive.
Now, we, we had this once before, right, with this application?
Yes, we did.
I'm not quite clear why it has to come back to us again.
I think maybe, Bruce, you should explain the existing conditions out there.
Right.
And the misunderstanding.
When we, the original permit allowed us to cut phragmatis along the shoreline, and it was in most of the pond, other than in the very northern part, which is village-owned property, and not the property immediately to the west of that, which is one oh nine Duck Pond Lane access. All the rest of the pond had a thick ban of phragmatis, and then when you moved away from the phragmatis, which is usually about anywhere from maybe five feet to fifteen feet thick, except there, there actually is another location where it's thicker as well, but at any rate, then it becomes lawn, or it becomes a, a well-established buffer. But in these two cases that we're talking about, so our permit originally allowed us to go in and cut phragmatis in those areas, as well as to dig up the water lilies, which is a separate issue, which has been done and is part of the ongoing management program. But in the two areas that I'm here about tonight, there, the phragmatis goes up about five feet, ten feet, or whatever, but then it continues up another, in some cases ninety Over in the village property, it's about seventy-five feet that we want to be able to access it, in the case of one oh nine Duck Pond Lane, it's about ninety feet. In the case of one oh nine Duck Pond Lane, it's phragmatis, and it becomes a mixture of all sorts of other things, and then it, it, the elevation changes by a couple feet, and it becomes well-established lawn. And we wanted to be able to.
Is that it, this area in here?
Yeah, exactly.
And this area here with the village zone?
Yeah, those areas.
That was not part of the original cutting, but now you want to cut and clear that?
Exactly. And by clear, it's not to, the intent of the clearing is to be able to get in there and, and clear out the phragmatis on an ongoing basis, but it's also to clear out, it wasn't intended this way, but it will require clearing out a lot of other things that are in there. And the things that we're asking permission to clear out of what's in there would be all the non-native invasive species other than phragmatis. The things that will be leaving would be the native species, which is very little in those areas.
Which is being choked out by both phragmatis and these other non.
Yeah, it's a, one of them is a rose cultivar of some sort, the other are the things that you see all over the fields, not just in the wetlands, you know, it's bittersweet, honeysuckle, and a couple, mixture of a couple of other things. It'd be the same continued management program.
That's, that, that land is owned by one oh nine Duck Pond?
The.
This big area that.
Yes, yes.
And, and, and you have their permission to.
Yes, I'm the agent for them on this, right. Now, I should also explain, just to be clear about that, because of the misunderstanding in terms of one oh nine Duck Pond Lane, they went in and cleared off quite a bit of it, they had their landscaper clear it out, they had spoken to me about it, it's not like they went in there without, you know, just deciding to do what they wanted, they spoke to me about it, but they misunderstood when they were allowed to get in there. They went ahead and cleared a lot of that out, they left, some of the stuff they left are, are not native, they should actually go out as well, and one thing is probably as problematic as phragmatis, but the goal is to replace those things and eventually put in to increase the amount of native vegetation that's already there, which is primarily ground soil, and there's a little bit of bayberry and a couple of other things.
Now, is that something the town would do, or the homeowner?
No, no, this is the homeowners, is taking care of the cost of doing this on both the one oh nine Duck Pond Lane and the village-owned portion.
And you're in agreement with them to do that?
With the. Uh, with the...
You're going to go in and clear it out, correct, the stuff that you don't want in there, the town?
Right, right.
But then the planting, you have an agreement with them that they're going to put the, at their expense, put the plants in that you specify?
Yes, that was actually a condition of the original permit, it's a condition of this one as well, or at least we would expect it to be a condition of this amendment or modification, whatever this, this new piece is. There was no, it wasn't specified the extent to which it has to be replanted, but the intent is to not have it be lawn. If it ends up being, the reality is that it may end up being some of the same native stuff, which is just cut for five years and weakened, but still there, we don't know, and in some cases may open up to the, to the level that you can get in some other native stuff, and then they'll go ahead and do that.
Makes sense to me. It makes sense the first time around, so...
It's better for the health of the pond?
Oh, definitely is, yeah.
I was walking around Agawam on, I guess, Sunday morning, just the phragmides on the east side of the lake are just, you can't even see through them.
Japanese knotweed too, they're...
Yeah, yeah.
You don't want to see through.
I remember when I was a kid, you'd be able to, you, you, when you drive down there, you can't even see the, look in across the water. Now, anyone, when I was a kid, you used to have this nice view across the pond. So I think that'll help here too, with the homeowners and for the village property.
Somebody else is picking up the tab.
Yeah.
Uh, just, I know, you know, it makes sense, but I have to point out a couple of things. The original permit authorized this orange crosshatched fringe, as Bruce said, it's maybe fifteen foot in width across that property. And I mean, when this came in, I got the phone call, and we advised Bruce that we really felt it should come back to the board. My concern is that, you know, this, to me, is, is a violation. In other words, a very large area was cleared, going back ninety feet, without authorization, and really without a landscape restoration plan, and that was one of my concerns in the original permit. And we did, you know, ask for a more aggressive revegetation plan, but in that case, it made sense how the board handled that, because it was really just trimming and managing phragmides, and trying to get that to be, you know, reduced in terms of vigor so that native species could come in. This is a very extensive cleared area, that in my mind, if it was on any other property, we would look for a fairly aggressive revegetation plan. So this is combined with invasive plants that really need to be very aggressively managed, and in particular, myla minute weed, or myla minute vine, you know, is, is a very difficult plant to control. So, you know, my initial reaction is we should get some type of a more aggressive replanting plan, because this is going back ninety feet, it's not just trimming phragmides, it involves, you know, a number of other species, and we really don't have a handle on how this is going to be revegetated in a way that's going to keep out the invasives and ensure that we don't get a creep of lawn area. That's primarily 109 Duck Pond. Uh, the village property, I, I think I want to look at again, because again, this is kind of an expansion beyond the original permitted area, I haven't had a chance to go down yet. This, this just came in, and this is our first meeting on it, so I wanted to bring that to the board's attention. And just to also make sure from a housekeeping standpoint, that we still have the original permission from these two entities, you know, authorizing Bruce to represent them, we have the original permit, I assume that's okay, maybe Rick can look at the file and determine if, you know, that original authorization is still in effect for this modification that's being requested. Uh, the only paperwork that was filed was from Bruce on behalf of these owners. So those are the items that, that I was concerned about, and I also feel it's necessary to kind of identify the cleared area, identify the areas that are going to be further managed, that maybe aren't specified on here beyond this hatched plan, and what is the quantity of disturbance in that area? There may need to be erosion control, you know, a lot of things come into play when you're clearing such a large area.
Two, two other questions I have is, one is long-term, you go through this whole process, you clean this all out, or the homeowner does, and you're in agreement you replant it, and then five years later, nobody does anything, and everything creeps and grows right back in again, so is there any continuing maintenance plan after the work is originally done? And then two is, we were sort of specific about when they cleaned it up, how this stuff was taken out of there. I see you had a road, and you replanted grass from one of the pictures and everything, which is nicely redone. But I guess if, if they're going to do a lot of work in this area, some kind of methodology of, of that also.
Yeah, we did look at that for the original, but again, it was a very narrow band.
Yeah.
So I think that that would be appropriate as well.
Could I comment on some of the things you were saying, Jay? First of all, I'm sure that the, I know I support completely what you're saying in terms of the more extensive restoration, and I'm sure the, 109 Duck Pond Lane, that, that owners on board are doing that. So that's not an issue, in terms of spelling it out, I mean, the reality is that we don't know, and this addresses your question, your comment too, we don't know at the end of five years how successfully the other stuff would have been controlled to allow the native vegetation to get established. We also, I don't know of any mechanism that would ensure that beyond the length of the permit, that it's continued to be maintained, because could be new owners that don't buy into it, I don't know how that would work, but, you know, that's why the permission to, to cut doesn't go beyond the five years, and presumably the permission, or the requirement to maintain it a certain way doesn't go beyond the five years, although I, I, hopefully they would do that. If you get the native vegetation, the more successfully we establish native vegetation and eliminate the non-natives and the invasives, then the longer it's going to go before it requires additional management, additional work, but, you know, those are all relative terms. In terms of a, a restoration plan, a more detailed one, I mean, the methodology is exactly the same, except the road that was used before was used because of the fact that we had to get a hydro rake into the pond. In this case, for the work that we're talking about now, it's literally a crew of five people, or four people, going down there with weed blockers. So we're not talking about any sort of erosion issues or need to do anything to the road, this is all hand labor in this case. Because, also because of the fact that it's much more selective than, or at least it requires that the people, you know, are looking more carefully, you can't go in there with a, a bigger piece of machinery. But in terms of the, the restoration plan, I mean, I don't really know of any way, and I'm not saying this, you know, to, as a straw man or whatever, I don't know how to write up a more comprehensive, a more detailed restoration plan. I think, you know, because we have quite a bit of language in the first, I think one thing that's really appropriate, and we could certainly put it in more explicitly, would be to say that under no conditions does this allow lawn to be extended into this area, whether it ends up being quote-unquote "just happening on its own," or whether it be because it was pulled, the other stuff was pulled out and planted, that the end result can't be lawn in there, period. And I think that's really the key goal of what we're trying to do in the restoration. It may go back to weeds, and you know, then are the people, clients would have wasted their money, but it wouldn't have been a violation of, or any sort of breach of what we're trying to do, but if it becomes lawn, then it is really a breach of what we're trying to do, and I think that should be explicitly noted, that it can't be lawn. But beyond that, I don't really know how to write up, and I would certainly be willing to look at anything that anybody else can provide in terms of what to do about a restoration plan that's more detailed. Because I don't want to waste the client's, you know, money either on this, and go back and forth on it. I'm only to accept whatever.
Notary has always been an issue.
Yeah, I mean, I would flip it back to you, Bruce, you know, that's what you need to do as a consultant for your client. If, if you're looking to control invasives, I want to know exactly what they are, what the preferred methodology for control is of each type of species, and just, you know, cutting them may not be enough. It may require some shading, and it may require aggressive additional planting to out-compete the invasives, it may require more aggressive techniques, such as excavation of the root zone, but unless you can tell me what each species is and how that's going to be controlled, you know, I, I just don't see this as a cohesive plan, that, you know, uncomfortable with such a large area, you know, moving forward with.
I mean, I guess I have to look at the, you know, flip it hundred and eighty degrees and say that currently we have a, a ninety-foot area of phragmides, which everybody's agreed should not be in there, it's not supposed to have been in it to begin with. We have a rose cultivar that I haven't seen anybody identify, but again, it's not native, this area, and it's not something that we're trying to, that the, when I say we, that the town, the conservation biologists, anybody's trying to promote. We have myla minute, which is, again, the same sort of issue, and there, you do it by pulling, but all the others, you do it by cutting it. It's not, the, the budget wasn't there, and the intent wasn't there to try to, you know, to put in whatever money it would take to excavate everything and have it be restored area, that wasn't what the intent of the project was, and I don't think there's support for going that route. I don't, because of the fact that it's not sport, doesn't mean, I don't think argues that it's legitimate to say that you can't do anything in terms of the junk that's down there right now, just because we can't come up with a plan that is affordable to completely replace it. I don't think that's the, I, I don't understand, I don't think that's the role of the board, or to, but maybe I really don't, perhaps I just don't understand that, that...
There is a memo on the file, perhaps you'd want to take a look at that, I can provide you with a copy. It's, it's my comments, you know, for this evening's meeting, I'm kind of going back and forth at this point, saying the same things. But that, that's my input to the board at this time.
Well, can I, let me just ask the last question, I won't go back and forth on it, but if you're talking about a full-scale restoration plan in there, does, is that the, I guess what I want to know is, when I bring it to the client, if they're not willing to foot that bill, are you saying, are you collectively saying that you won't entertain the idea of, of doing this the way that it's being proposed right now? In other words, is it either or on the, on the part of the board, that either everything's removed, and it's done as a full-scale restoration of native species, or nothing? I think it's a legitimate question before I go out to the client.
I'm getting a little lost here, maybe you could, we could start from the beginning, we have Duck Pond, where has invasive species that you would like to clean out, but the homeowners already started cleaning out?
Right.
Right, now, the next step is then you want to go back in and then augment what the homeowner did, and have the town crew go in and clean it out better?
Did you say the town, or?
Or, I don't know, who, who's doing that?
No, no, in, in the case of Duck Pond Lane, what I'm asking is, I'm pointing out to the board that this has been done illegally. We'd like to, I guess, legalize the fact that it was done, and we want to continue to maintain it in the way that's being proposed in the permit modification, which is to continue to cut.
Who was, who was going?
Uh, it's a landscaper being employed by the owners of Duck Pond Lane, 109 Duck Pond Lane.
All right, so you're going to specify to the owners of Duck Pond Lane, "Look, you cleaned this out, you did do a good enough job, you have to have your landscapers go in, but this is what we want," you're going to specify what they're going to do?
Right, and it won't be done by that landscaper, it'll be done by this same person who did the phragmides cutting throughout the rest of the pond.
All right, so you're going to not only tell them what they're going to do, you're going to tell them who they're going to use to do it?
Uh, well, I, I don't think I can require it, but yeah, I'm going to at least be recommending that it be done by the same person that did the other work.
Okay.
Because of the issue of the fact this new person didn't know what they were doing properly.
But then you could talk to them about the concerns of, of maintaining that?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
I don't know, is that a little clearer?
Yeah, I mean, from my standpoint, Bruce asked you a question, from my standpoint, it's not all or nothing at all. I think we just need some more information, that, you know, it's a very large area, we don't really know what's been cleared, we don't really know what the plan is. We did have a suggestion for bi-monthly monitoring to look, look for invasives and hand-pull them if they come up, and I think it may be a question of tuning up the plan that has been submitted, and having an approach to each species that makes sense.
Well, you want to go down and look at it too, right? You haven't looked at it yet?
I'm going down to look at it, and maybe it would make sense for Bruce and I to schedule a...
That's what I was going to say, maybe you should look at it, and then...
Yeah, we can meet down there, similar to what we did the first time around, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention that the original restoration was a very narrow band, this is a very large area, and it just, we don't have a lot of detail on how it's being approached.
In answer to the other question, you know, I think you should get written authorization from the, from the owner of 109 Duck Pond Lane, to act as his agent, I mean, otherwise we have nothing that ties what we're doing to the owner.
Yeah, fair enough, I'll do that, in terms of the...
And the village property as well.
And if you're doing something different than what was previously authorized for the village property, you, you should get an updated authorization from the village. Otherwise, how do we know that this is work that the village is, is going to allow?
Right.
I mean, we're not the village, the zoning board is not the village, the zoning board is simply the agency that's reviewing the work.
Who does actually have, you know, in the case of the other amendment, I'm sorry, in the case of the original permit, it was submitted at least to, it was submitted by the Wickapock, Wickapock Homers Corporation and the Old Town Southampton Association. Who, who does sign off for the village? I went through everybody that I know in the village, including the mayor, all of whom said yes, but who actually signs off in a way that is acceptable?
It would be the mayor.
Want me to get a letter from the mayor? I mean, I could certainly do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, if you recall the first time around, I, I, I don't want to mischaracterize it, but the application was a legal nightmare.
Yeah.
It was a nightmare to Chick, it was a nightmare to me, we went out of our way because you were doing something that looked good, that the board was in favor, to, to simplify the process. But we have to have written authorizations.
Yeah, I'm only asking the question in the sense that it went through the first round, I'm trying to figure out, you know, if this, the same process went through the first time around, doesn't seem to be acceptable now, I'm just wanting to make sure that when I come back in with...
You didn't have written authorization from the owners the first time, I believe you did.
The mayor? I don't have anything, do you have anything, anything in your files from the mayor?
Yeah, right, uh, you know, I'm looking for that, and I haven't found it yet.
No, I don't think so, no, I was directed, you know, I was directed, really bounced around to various offices, but... And I remember speaking to you about it as well beforehand.
Yeah, neither Chick nor I necessarily remember everything that happened a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Why don't we just simplify it and get the written authorization?
That's fine, that's fine, to make sure that I have the correct source for it.
And here's the memo that was in the board's file.
Thanks.
So I think at this point, we will schedule a meeting with Bruce in the field, come up with a, an approach, have amended paperwork so that we're a little bit more comfortable with what's being proposed, and look to, you know, try and come to some resolution.
So meanwhile, we will adjourn for all purposes.
I think that's all, all we can do.
So moved.
Second.
Will it be there?
Aye.
That concludes the July meeting, 2014 of the Southampton Village Zoning Board Appeals.
All right.